Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Larry Cohen.
Here.
Betsy Dennis.
Here.
Jennifer Edge.
Here.
Tracy Anna Lake Everett.
Here.
Christine Galbo.
Here.
Frank Gurnett.
Willa Radley.
Georgia Pachin.
Here.
Bill Zoff.
Here.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Dr. Dolan, would you review the fire exits, please?
Fire exits are located in the rear of the LJI. There's two exits from the back.
Please stand for a moment of silence for Nancy Green Supple, a former school nurse
Good evening. We'd like to start our workshop off by introducing Kendra, who is from ECG, who's our engineering firm that's doing our energy performance contract, and also Rich Coors from Amaresco, which is the company that will actually be doing the work here. To just give the board an idea of where we are, the board has approved us to move forward. There's a resolution on the board for us to continue with the project, so we just wanted to give you an idea and give you a little bit more specifics about what the project would entail.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. It's been several months since my last appearance here. The last time I was here, it was November, and we were discussing the initial concept of performance contracting and how it could benefit your district. And I'm excited to be here to report on the progress that's been made since then. We've made quite a bit of progress. Since that time, we issued a request for proposals, and we got five responses from energy services companies, which was an outstanding response. Then back in March, the board allowed us to proceed with Amaresco, which was the winning ESCO from the RFP process. And in the time that's elapsed since February, Amaresco and ECG in the district have been working together to produce what's called a comprehensive energy audit, which is the final scope and savings for your energy project. So we've been collaborating with the district, working a great deal with Henry Sibelli to determine what are the district's priorities and make sure that as many of those as can be addressed are included in the final scope. So tonight, I'm here to answer any questions you have, but really, the main presentation will be done by Richard Coors, who's the representative from Amaresco, and he'll take you through the scope of work to acquaint you with the overall project. Thank you.
My name is Richard Coors. I'm with Amaresco. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and to address the board and to review the energy performance contract that we've structured with the district's help and with ECG. The, I'm not sure if you, I think they received, the board received, okay. What we'll do is we'll go through the major measures of improvements for the project and the savings and the costs that are involved in this project. The annual savings that have been projected are almost $250,000, $244,000. And those savings are going to be derived from a number of improvement measures that will be implemented by this project. The largest generation of savings will come from building controls, building automation. Now, you have a building automation here at the system at the high school that will be upgraded and improved and expanded to all of the other schools and the administration building in the district. So with building controls, lighting, cogeneration, and electronic machine management, which is printer management, district network printers, this $244,000 will be generated each year from those measures and the others shown on the board. Now, the costs, the savings are going to help implement those measures, and the costs are shown on this particular pie chart. And you can see that cogeneration, lighting, building controls, and now boilers are going to require most of the savings from what we had on the previous screen. But you'll see a number of other smaller measures that are also going to be generating savings towards the project completion. In addition to the improvements that are scheduled for the buildings, the physical improvements, there's also going to be a significant environmental impact, a positive one, of course. Everybody has talked or heard about reducing carbon footprint. What this project does is it decreases your carbon output by 2.6 million pounds each and every year. Now, what does that mean? That's a very, very large number, 2.6 million. Well, that's the equivalent of taking 250 automobiles off the road each and every year or not burning 135,000 gallons of gasoline each and every year. So it does have a very, very positive impact on the local environment and throughout the state, actually. Now, the measures that we're going to look at in detail tonight are the main measures, the driving measures of the project. One is a boiler replacement here at the high school. The high school is relatively new, 10, 12 years old, but the boilers are universal hot water boilers, and the, especially boiler B1, there's B1 and B2, especially boiler B1 has had tremendous mechanical issues since it was installed. In fact, the manufacturer is no longer in business. So what we have proposed is to remove that one large boiler, leave one in place, and in the place of the one being removed, put a smaller sectional boiler, which is similar to what's there, and two hydrotherm gas boilers. Now, all of these three are smaller, so they can better cover the shoulder periods of the year without running the bigger boiler. And also because these boilers are very, very high efficient boilers, especially the hydrotherms. So you're actually going to have a hybrid plant. You will be able to burn oil if gas is not available or the unthinkable gas becomes higher priced than oil. But you also have the ability to use condensing technology, which is a very efficient technology. The next item is cogeneration. Now, this is completely new to the district. Cogeneration is taking an internal combustion engine and using it to create electricity and heat as a byproduct. Now, that heat will be used to heat sections of the building, to condition the water, temper the water in the pool, and to help produce domestic hot water for the sinks and the kitchen. So the cogeneration isn't going to take the place of your boilers, but it's going to supplement the boilers during the fall, during the spring, and used almost exclusively for the swimming pool during the winter months. Now, with a swimming pool, why do you need conditioned water? Well, evaporation takes place. The water that's already been treated or tempered to 80-plus degrees evaporates, so it has to be replaced with city water. And that city water is a lot colder than 80 degrees, so you need something. And right now, you're using the boilers, the main boilers of the building to produce that heat. So cogeneration, and since it is all new to the district, we're required by the state to offer all maintenance, all repair, and replacement over the 18-year period that this contract covers. So it's virtually cost-free to the district. Window replacement. Now, the district has been very, very proactive in replacing windows in the district, and they have replaced most of the windows in South Avenue. There's still six large and two small windows in the gymnasium. You can see three of the larger windows there in the gymnasium, and those are going to be replaced with the same color and style of windows that you have in the rest of the building. It'll be energy efficient, low E glass, they'll be aesthetically more pleasing, and a lot better utility-wise. Building management system, automation, building controls. You have a contractor that has provided the controls for this building by the name of NCON. We're going to subcontract to NCON to put building controls, building automation throughout the district, even at the bus garage and the administration building. So Henry and his people can control the buildings from a remote location. Henry will know what's going on utility-wise at each and every building from his office in the administration building. Or Mike or others designated by the district can also look at the buildings on a cold winter day, make sure that, even though school is out, make sure the buildings are set back so that temperatures aren't running wild, even though the schools are unoccupied. So building management, building controls, we're going to be adding 774 new points of control to the existing 1,000 points that you have right now. So it's going to be a major advance in being able to control the temperatures and the comfort levels in each and every area of the buildings in the district. Lighting system improvements. Lighting is constantly evolving, and even the newest T8 technology, the long skinny tubes that you see in a lot of the classrooms, hallways, and probably up in these fixtures too, those will be replaced with even more efficient T8s, going from 20 watt or, I mean 28 watt or 32 watt to 25 watt. The incandescent cans, these that you see here, the recessed lighting, that's all going to be changed to LED. LED at one time was very expensive, cost prohibitive, but LED has finally got to the point where it is financially viable, it's feasible to put in many locations that previously it was just too costly. So there's about 5,300 fixtures that will be impacted in the district. 400 new fixtures will also be installed in the district. And in most of the buildings, new gymnasium fixtures with lighting controls, individual lighting controls will be installed. Lighting controls, you do have sensors in a few places in the building. We're going to be installing 501 new occupancy-based sensors. In some places, there'll actually be vacancy sensors, especially in some classrooms. Vacancy sensors requires you to turn the light on when you enter the room, but when you leave, it automatically turns them off. So you can see the advantages. Right now, if you forget something in your office or in a classroom and you just dart back in to get it, the lights are going to come on, whether you're going to be there for five seconds or five minutes. And they'll stay on until after you leave, and at a predetermined time, a length of time, they'll turn off. So vacancy in some places, occupancy in other places. And in all cases, there'll be dual technology, so you don't have to stand up and wave your arms when the lights go out because you're very intently reading. Exterior lighting. Exterior lighting is probably, and I know I wouldn't have expected it, but exterior lighting is one of the best uses of LED technology. And if you happen to be in the New Paltz area, we have just recently installed LED lights in the parking lots and the wall packs throughout the district. So if you're going by the high school and it happens to be after dusk, make sure you slow down and take a look. These lamps, these fixtures are incredibly efficient. I mean, they use probably one-fifth or less the wattage that regular lamps do. So 175 new exterior lights will be installed, 107 of them will be LED. Air conditioning. You have rooftop air conditioning units for Glenham and Forestville. They have one in each of the libraries and an additional cooling unit in the computer server room in Forestville. These three, and that's a picture of one, I think it's Glenham. They're old, they malfunction, they're not very efficient. They will be completely replaced, and we've discussed with Henry the best way to install the air conditioning at those, not necessarily replace them kind, but actually rebuild the way that that air conditioner affects the areas within those two schools. Building envelope is always a good measure. Ceiling, the interfaces between the walls and the roofs, ceiling and weather stripping doors, replacing the weather strips and doors, overhead doors included. Windows that need recaulkings will be recaulked. This is a very good measure, especially since you're being, going to have an expanded building control system. Some of the other improvements that are, I've included more detail in the back of the document that was distributed to you, but we have electronic machine management, that's printer control, monitoring and reporting, vending machine controls, gym destratification fans, those are for the gymnasium and the higher ceiling spaces in the high school, variable frequency drives, walking cooler, freezer controls, engine block heaters for the bus garage, pipe insulation, premium efficiency motors at the middle school, steam trap replacements throughout Forestville and South Avenue, and high-efficiency transformers at the high school. Now, the energy performance contract, what we've tried to do is align this with the needs and the strategic goals of the district. We want to make sure that we use local contractors wherever and however we can. We also have a promise to maintain the levels and the comfort or improve the comfort levels within the buildings. We guarantee 100% of the savings, so it's real, verifiable, sustainable, and persistent energy savings. And this is something that will definitely reduce the risk to the district for having failed equipment or high energy bills, and it will be done all through energy savings. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Sure. I noticed that there are no proposals for any solar energy.
That's correct.
We've got a wealth of rooftop and pretty much from dawn to dusk, solar exposure. Why is there no proposal for anything solar?
It really is a function of the incentives that the state pays or the utilities pay. They have had, the state through NYSERDA and the state through, I mean, the utilities through their local programs have had a wealth of rebate programs to support solar, to the point where it was financially burdensome to the state and to the local utilities. So the incentives have gone from nearly $7 a watt to maybe $1.50 a watt now, $1.40 a watt. Solar is still a very expensive proposition, and it's something that, and the schools, for the most part, aren't really good candidates for, even though a lot of schools are putting solar on. When you think of it, the peak usage of solar is in the late spring, summer, and early fall, when the sun is at its highest. And that's when there's the least use of energy within preschool facilities, for the most part. So it's really not, we have to guarantee the savings and we have to make sure that all that's implemented is covered by the savings. So the choice is to do windows and boilers or do solar. And in consultation with the district, the thought was that we not look at alternative energy because there are other needs that the district has. So as nice as solar is, it's still a very expensive proposition, and it really needs healthy incentives from the utilities or from the state.
Bill, can you indulge me in a second question?
Fire away. I've got plenty, so you might as well get yours underway first.
And this is, of course, no reflection on you or your company, but from a risk point of view, the savings are guaranteed by your company. As you mentioned, one of the providers of our boilers went out of business after they provided us with a boiler. If in our economy, your firm goes out of business in three years, who backs us with the guarantee?
Well, right now, it's our company, and there are no guarantees about whether a company is, I mean, even IBM could fail and go out of business, I guess. Our company has, in one form or another, been in business for 30 years. I've been involved in this industry for that long. I've been a taxpayer in Beacon for that long, so I don't want to do anything that's going to be foolish or improper for the Beacon City School District. I know that over the years, we have completed many, many projects, and they've been completed very successfully. But for me to say that the company will definitely be in business 30 years ago, I mean, 18 years from now or 15 years ago from now, I can't do, I don't think anybody can say that any company will be in business 15 years ago. You don't know. There's too many, too much uncertainty. But I do know you have the best opportunity for a successful project for a long term with Amaresco than you would with any other company. I mean, this is all we do. We don't make software, we don't write software, we don't make products. What we do is we do energy efficiency. We have a project similar to this for the White House. We have a project similar to this for the, not the Pentagon, but the sections of the US military. And they really rely on us to have this operational and provide savings for even a longer period of time than the 18 years. So they feel confident, I feel confident, and that's the only way that I can answer your question.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay. My first group of questions are probably more general ones regarding energy savings as opposed specifically for ours. I'm working under the premise that the reason we want to do this is because of your cost savings to us, that, you know, ultimately, the cost that we're going to pay out to do those improvements will be offset by the energy savings we get.
Right.
So there are certain expenses, I'm not sure that they're included at the moment, so I want to see if they are or not. For example, you did mention for the cogeneration unit that that does include maintenance and repairs and everything else that's needed. There are some other systems that we're replacing, we're adding like the automation for the building controls, things like that. Does that include, is there maintenance included in there? Is, you know, something for repairs, additional training for staff, or if we require additional staff because of more complex systems, are those kind of things factored in as well?
Yes, that's the short answer. The long answer is, is that building controls, it's the training that really counts. And we offer a significant amount of training, and it's not just one time, it's recurring, because as people change, as technology changes, we want to make sure the upgrades that are put in place are understood and well-used by the staff in the district. With the case of the other items, where you're currently doing maintenance, and you do have a good maintenance staff, Mike Hawke and Henry and, you know, under Henry's guidance and with Mike as the head guy, you have a really good department. The people are very good at anticipating a problem and taking care of it. There really isn't anything other than you, that you need, other than to continue the maintenance as you're doing it now, but to take advantage of the training. For example, the lighting, there really isn't anything new with the lighting except for a change in technology. And also what you're going to find with the new lamps, especially the LED, the lifespan of these technologies is far greater than the technologies of the past. So you're not going to have the problems or the issues that you had with lighting failing or not getting the correct output for the particular space. Boilers, you do maintenance on your boilers now, you're going to have the training on the hydraulic, you're also going to, no, hydraulic, on the gas boilers, you're going to have the training and you're going to have the support. Now, the coverage as far as maintenance only lasts for the warranty period. For most items, it's three years. For the lamps and ballasts, it's five years. There aren't any other, windows, for example, there's really, and windows are fairly expensive. There's really no training or nothing that you really need for that. Steam traps, all the steam traps in the district are going to be replaced. We're going to map all the steam traps that are in the district so you know where they are. The service of those steam traps will be as they were before, except you have all of them being done at once, and there will be a prolonged life of the new traps. I hope I've answered your question.
It does. Maybe, Anne Marie, something might be more for you as far as paying for this, I assume that would be a bond?
There's several different ways. We can either do a bond or you do, there's another financial arrangement, so, and it's also spread out over the year. The other part to mention, too, is that we do get building aid on it, and it goes in as a capital project, so that there will be, you know, a debt schedule, but there's also offsetting revenue, similar for us the way we do a capital project now.
The way, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if we're borrowing money, and no matter how we do it, if we're borrowing money, we have to pay some sort of interest on that, that the interest costs are also being taken into account.
Yes.
Over life of the project, so that, you know, we don't wind up...
The financing would be done over 15 years, so that matches the payment of the state aid. For the financial documents that we prepared for this, we assumed 4% interest rate, which is very high compared to what it really is right now. And we have also taken into account the state aid, which is at the minus 10% level. And it came out to $44,000 to $50,000 extra cash flow each and every year. So the project isn't structured so that it's so tight that if there's a blip in how you use your equipment, or a blip in maybe us not having the boilers tuned exactly right first time out, you're still going to get more savings than you are required to pay the repayment of the lease purchase finance financing.
Are the major cost items, such as the boilers and the cogeneration units and maybe even the building controls, are those, you know, the lifespan of that? I mean, I'm looking for something where the lifespan is at least as great or not greater than the timeframe over which we're paying back.
Yeah. All three of them will exceed the life of the project. All three of them will exceed the life of the project, the eighteen years. Building controls, as you can imagine, are all electronics. So the only thing that really occurs year to year is program upgrades or software upgrades, which we would work with the district. We would take care of for, with the district. Boilers, boilers normally, and I don't know why the, how the selection was made on the previous boilers, but the boilers that we would be procuring are from companies that have already been in existence for forty, fifty years and beyond. And with the, with the new boilers, they're small enough so that the repairs can be done and it's not going to be a burden on the Ameresco project to have them taken care of. And cogen too, I'm sorry, cogen. Now, with cogen, since replacement is carried by us, it's a reciprocating engine. We took Henry and Mike Hawke to Clarkstown Central School District, where we've had a cogen operating in the same situation as you would have here for the last ten years, eight years. And it's been operating flawlessly. Now, what's happened twice over those eight years is the entire engine has been taken out and replaced. It's just like, I mean, you have a car or truck engine that's running sometimes twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's only going to last for so many hours of operation. And we make sure that in the maintenance, the scheduled maintenance, that it's taken out and replaced prior to there being any problems. And that's covered under our project.
Speaking of the boilers, I mean, I noticed that that was one of the higher items for, in terms of expense.
Right.
Also one of the least items in terms of savings.
Right.
Just looking at it, I'm simplifying it here, but it looked like it would take roughly seventy years to make back the expense. So I would think that, looking just at that, that wouldn't be enough of a reason to replace the boilers. There would have to be other justification besides simply energy savings.
Not being able to heat your school. And that's the big reason. We...
We asked you to look at the boilers because, as you remember, we had some issue here at the high school about a year ago. And we were trying to figure out how to do that. And this was the best way that we could manage to do that.
Okay.
But we're not, you know, they were fixed and they're working and they're okay. But, you know, as Richard mentioned, the company's out of business and we were having a hard time at one time trying to find somebody to repair it. So that was the district's decision to ask him to do that.
And usually, when boilers or other long-pay-back items are included in a performance contract, it's because there's a need for their replacement other than from the efficiency standpoint. And this is one of those cases where you really need to do something about the worst of the two boilers so that you have a reliable heating plant for the, for the school year.
Well, it sounds, so it sounds like, really, realistically, since we've only been in this building for like ten to twelve years, I mean, and the life of boiler should be much longer than that, that it was a poor selection of that boiler in the first place.
Well, it's either that or there's something that was inherently wrong when it was installed. Boilers, boilers should last, that type of boiler should last forty, fifty years. You have boilers or had boilers in your other schools that have been around that long. And that's what it should be.
So if we're going to replace it, how are we going to structure the proposals for the parts of the boiler to make sure that we don't, you know, get forced into making a decision that's based on the same sort of thing, where it's maybe a company that's not been around long and the warranty period is not satisfactory?
First of all, you're going to have companies that have been around for a long time and have really good products with good warranties. And they have good service. And that you've got contractors in the area that have the knowledge of working on these boilers. So whether it's H.B. Smith or any of the more recognizable boiler manufacturers, you will have much more longevity and security from these new boilers.
I just want to make sure that the, when the RFP goes out, it's written in such a way that, you know, I mean, typically, we have to go with the lowest qualified bid.
See, performance contracts, you don't have to go with lowest qualified bid. What you have to do is you have to get the company that offers you the best benefit, the best resolve to your issues and be able to pay for everything within savings that are generated through a period not to exceed eighteen years. And believe me, you know, we're a company that wants to have successful projects. So we're not going to be looking for low-cost installers or low-cost manufacturers. We want to make sure that the products that are installed and the people installing them are the best that we can get. I mean, it's to our benefit as well as yours.
The building controls, where you're going to put in the automated controls in the other buildings, is that going to require any sort of upgrade in our computer systems or our communication lines or anything as part of that?
No, you've got everything covered in that regard. And they're not going to piggyback, they're going to piggyback on your main communication line, but they're not going to take, be embedded in your servers. So they'll, they'll be an independent source.
I have a question.
Sure.
As far as monitoring then on the success rate, as far as what we're saving and what aspects are functioning perhaps better than others, when will we get an update on that? I assume that would be done by your company.
Well, it'll be done by our company. But you've hired ECG to also look over our shoulder and make sure that everything is being done with, you know, with the district's interest in mind. What we will do periodically throughout the year is, I mean, we're monitoring your system too. We're going to see where you've had some problems or maybe there's been some system overrides or maybe there's areas in your buildings that are running too hot or too cold. We'll want to know what that is too. So we'll be in contact with your facilities people just to make sure there isn't a problem. And then, either semi-annually or annually, we'll be reporting to the district, whichever they prefer, on what your utilities were, as was reported to you by your utility company, and reconcile that to the savings that we had projected.
I have one more question. Thinking about regulating temperature. There have always been complaints, especially in our new building here, that some classrooms are cold, some classrooms are hot, some walls are cold, et cetera, et cetera. In your plan, is this being remedied?
Yes. To the extent that it's not a personal issue. I mean, we can't make everybody comfortable.
This is a real issue. This is not a personal thing.
We can't make, yeah, we can't make everybody comfortable all the time. But we're going to make sure that the appropriate temperatures, and, you know, we've discussed this with the district. What's, like, in here right now, it's very hot. To make sure that at certain periods of the year, the cooling is at a certain level. It's not cold, but it's not hot. In those temperatures, we're going to rely on Henry and the district to tell us what makes sense for the people that are in those areas of the building. Now, we've assumed that the daytime temperature is sixty-eight. We've assumed that the night setbacks for your buildings are sixty in the winter, in the heating season. And we've assumed that the regular air-conditioned temperature is seventy-two. So that's what we used to work out our financial model. And, you know, it was done with consultation with the district. So now, you may have other areas. All areas won't be treated the same. You may have some areas that has a wing on the north side of a building that's always cold. So you have to have the temperatures a little bit higher than that in the winter. And that has been taken into consideration too.
Okay, I think that that's more of what I'm speaking about because I know that there are areas in the building...
Like, there's areas of Glenham and Forestville that get very cold. So we're making sure that those areas are treated a little bit differently.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
We look forward to the work.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion for executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual.
Second?